Testing.
Okay.
We're good, okay.
All right. There we go. Thank you, everybody, for being here for this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Could we have the roll, please?
Roll call. Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Collin.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levison.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnell.
Here.
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Also in attendance, Barry Lewis, Village Administrator, Steve Rother, Village Counsel, Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator. I'm gonna get this right one day, right? And myself, Chanel Smith, Acting Village Clerk. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the village's website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken at this meeting.
Thank you. We have one resolution to begin to go into executive session.
Resolution 2013-249, Resolution authorizing an executive session at the October 28, 2013, meeting of the Board of Trustees.
And then one matter listed for our executive session discussion is Robin-Klein separation agreement, which is attorney-client privilege, personnel, and contract negotiation exceptions. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Levison.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. All in favor? Any opposed, absentions? Thank you. We'll be back here at 8:00. Still doesn't feel right. Okay, thank you, everybody. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Clark.
Still here.
Trustee Collin.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levison.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnell.
Here.
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Also in attendance, Barry Lewis, Village Administrator, Stephen Rother, Village Counsel, Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator, and Chanel Smith, Acting Village Clerk.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, a couple of announcements to get us started. Just a reminder that all of Village Hall departments and municipal offices have been relocated to the third floor of 76 South Orange Ave, the PNC Bank Building, while Village Hall is being renovated. So that will be our home for the time being. All the phone numbers, everything else is the same. Electronics recycling, the next electronic recycling date is December 14, and that's at RDPW on Walton Ave. Bring a proof of residency, and there are no commercial vehicles allowed. Leaf removal began today, and it will run through December 9. If you are interested in seeing when your street is being collected, you could visit the village website at southorange.org/leafcollection. If you live on a county road, you can call 973-239-3366. There is a paper shredding day, which is the last day for this year at Public Works. That's Saturday, November 9, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. There's also an auction for found and unclaimed bicycles. It'll be held Saturday, November 2, 2013, at 9:30 a.m. at Police Headquarters, 201 South Orange Ave. Bikes are sold as-is. You can use cash or check, and you can preview the bikes at 9:00 a.m. And I also just want to make a brief announcement that we reopened Village Hall midnight on Sunday to perform the first, if not one of the first, same-sex marriages in the state of New Jersey. It was a historic night, not only for us to all be able to be a part of that, but obviously also for the couple, who was proudly married at 12:01 and who had actually been domestic-partnered in that same exact location in 2004 at midnight, when Village President Calabrese performed that ceremony. And I know it's been a long journey for many folks, and we've seen a ton of applications, as our clerk's office can attest to, coming over the past week. And I think I can speak for all of us when I say that we're all very excited that we are now allowed to process the paperwork, and I am now allowed to officiate marriages for people regardless of sexual orientation. We have a couple of presentations this evening. The first is going to be from SOPAC. I know this is unfamiliar territory.
Well, it is, in a way. Good evening, President Torpe, distinguished Village trustees. My name is Mark Packer. I'm the Executive Director of the South Orange Performing Arts Center. The last time we formally met, you took action on an ordinance to restructure the debt of the South Orange Performing Arts Center, effectively forgiving $15 million of mortgage and interest owed to the village by SOPAC. You did this in recognition that the model that existed prior to that historic moment was unsustainable for the organization, and because of the resulting negative audit report associated with the debt, which prevented SOPAC from seeking contributed support. In taking action when you did, SOPAC was able to secure its first-ever General Operating Support Grant of $30,000 from the New Jersey State Council on the Arts. This is a three-year commitment that will total at least $90,000 and may increase during this interval. At the annual meeting of the Arts Council, an event attended by over 500 people from the nonprofit arts community and the press, the Executive Director of the Council, Nick Paleologos, made the Village of South Orange actions the centerpiece of his presentation. He stated, quote, "The village had released more funds to SOPAC than the Arts Council would award to over 250 grantees in a year," and that this was a great affirmation of the importance arts organizations play. of the importance arts organizations play in the economic vitality of a community. At the annual meeting of the Geraldine Rockefeller Dodge Foundation, Chris Daggett, President and CEO, announced-
Hold on one second. Okay.
It's on the screen. I can see it. And he won't do the-
Do we have someone at SOPAC that we can call?
Was really building to a crescendo.
Timing is everything.
Maybe we can just post presentations as well.
Yeah, if you can't fix it in a minute, throw it.
I'm gonna have to reset the camera. I'll just pick it up off the screen. For whatever reason, I'm not getting it.
Okay, that's fine. Sure.
Should I start from the top? It's better the second time?
Yeah, just, yeah, just give him one second to get everything back up there.
Oh, but his audio was bad, right?
Hmm?
The audio was bad, yes.
Oh, really?
You can go back pre-Crescendo.
Crescendo?
Pre-Crescendo.
Okay, all right, continue.
Thank you. Geraldine R. Dodge Foundation is the largest private funder, private institutional funder of the arts in the state of New Jersey. At their annual meeting, Chris Daggett, President and CEO, announced that the greatest thing to happen in the New Jersey arts community this past year was the action taken by the trustees of the Village of South Orange to forgive the SOPAC debt. We have a grant application pending with the Dodge Foundation. In fact, we have many corporate and foundation applications pending now, a good start on a path to fiscal stability and growth. Our new season has begun with encouraging results. Only six weeks into our new season, we have already generated two-thirds of the revenue that was earned in all of the previous year, and we still have many shows to come this year, and more than 20 shows that have not even gone on sale yet for the current season. Our booking consultant, Steve Laurie, has done a terrific job of attracting interesting, diverse, and popular shows to our roster. Since April, five shows have sold out. Historically, SOPAC typically sold out two or three shows in a year. Sales are brisk for the new season, and there's definitely a buzz in the community about the new SOPAC. We're hearing for the first time, finally, you have a show that I want to come to see. As many of you have heard me say, my vision for SOPAC is for it to be more than a place-based organization. Certainly, our presenting programming will be at the heart of our work here, but SOPAC can and will be so much more. A new Standing Committee of the Board has been formed to help advise and shape expanded educational outreach programming. We will seek to find new ways to engage audiences and build connections to the center through the creative process. Some notable steps have already occurred in this effort. Midtown Direct Rep, SOPAC's theater company in residence, will partner with us in providing a playwriting in the school's program for Soma Schools and the City of Orange. Both programs are being offered on a fee-for-service basis. These pilot programs may lead to an expanded partnership with NJ PAC to offer the program on a countywide basis. Another way that SOPAC found, a new and creative way to engage the community, was through our highly successful outdoor piano project, Playing Around South Orange. This project, which was a partnership with the Village, the Baird, SOFC, Seton Hall University, and many generous donors, involved recruiting local artists to paint six donated pianos, which were then strategically placed around South Orange to the delight of residents and visitors. Day and night, the sounds of people playing and singing could be heard for weeks, and no one complained. On the horizon, SOPAC will be working with local developer Ed Ayuso, who's present tonight, the Village of South Orange, and SOFC to improve the train station and the tunnels underneath the trains. A strategic planning meeting has been set for October 31st, and our intent is to approach Jim Weinstein, the Executive Director of NJ Transit, with one united plan and one proposal to make both structural and aesthetic improvements to the station. SOPAC is particularly interested in creating a mural project under the station in the cut-through to Sloan Street. The project would include wall murals, as well as adorning the 16 columns with paint and tile mosaic. This would be an opportunity to create a monumental work of art in the village, creating an outdoor museum, if you will, that will welcome the thousands of people who use the station every day. Best of all, it is a project that will engage hundreds of children and adults in the process of creative expression. Other longer-range plans may include a large-scale outdoor music festival on Flood's Hill that would greatly enhance the Village of South Orange's identity as a cultural destination, and more on that down the road. I am deeply appreciative to the Board of Governors and staff of SOPAC for their tireless work and deep commitment to our organization. They are engaged, committed, and devoted, and I thank each and every one of you for your enthusiastic support of the South Orange Performing Arts Center. Thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation. I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Okay, great.
Thank you very much. I just, I wanted, if possible, to hear any more about your plans for the New Jersey Transit space, because I was quite excited when I heard about the plan to do that. Do you already have any artists lined up, or is that gonna be?
I actually have, we have a proposal from a creative placemaker woman named Katie Dempsey. I think I may have actually sent you all a proposal, but I'll send it again. We're thinking about using a mural artist named Dan Fennellin, who actually adorned one of the pianos in this project, and his work is hanging in our gallery right now. He's a wonderful guy, really, really wonderful and engaging, and the plan would be to do an RFP for local artists to work on each of the 16 columns. So it really would create kind of a museum effect. But the other thing that we want to do is make sure that we have all the right stakeholders involved in the project, that there's been ample opportunity for public input into themes, you know, how we want this represented to the public. And so that will be part of our ongoing process and due diligence.
And you said that that is taking place, it's a sort of a package where you're talking about the art piece of it, but also structural improvements?
I'm having a little trouble hearing you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Am I not on? I guess, okay. So this was going to happen in conjunction with structural improvements?
Yeah, yeah, there's no way that we would begin the aesthetic improvements until there was a commitment and action by NJ Transit to do whatever remediation work is required at the station. So, because we don't want stilettites-
I've been under there, yeah.
-you know, dripping onto the mural projects.
New Jersey Transit is sometimes a challenge to work with.
Yes.
So what is your relationship with New Jersey Transit?
Sure. Well, there are a couple of things. First of all, Ed Ayuso has already had some contact with NJ Transit and has offered to help us in our quest to seek NJ Transit support. My wife's employer at the Geraldine R. Dodge Foundation is best friends with Jim Weinstein, and so we're hoping that he will provide us with an entree as well. So we would sort of be coming at it from two different directions. And I think that, you know, the case to be made is both that it's the fourth-most-traveled, most-used station on the NJ Transit line, and we have a great event, a 100th Anniversary Celebration for the station coming up, and so that all kind of ties in in a very nice way, and there's the whole economic development piece of the apartment building going up across the road. I think there's a really good story, a good narrative, that would make this appealing to NJ Transit. And I found out that there is somebody at NJ Transit who is an arts program manager, so that generally, when the stations are improved, they allocate a portion of funding for aesthetic improvements. There's already a precedent, a process, and the people in place to help us make that happen.
And finally, what's your timeline?
12 to 18 months.
Just a couple comments. Make sure you can hear me. Mr. Packer, thank you so much for coming out tonight and providing this presentation. I know you were before the Board of Trustees just a few short months ago, and I gotta tell you pleasantly, everything you said you would do and the staff at SOPAC, you've delivered. I really enjoyed seeing all the different grant and funding opportunities you've aggressively gone after, and I think that this is just the beginning. So the confidence that I have, and I know that members on the Board of Trustees share, we're just happy with where you are today.
Thank you so much, Trustee Collins. I really appreciate it.
And secondly, Playing Around South Orange, that was just such an amazing, amazing initiative, not just for the community. I found myself wanting to go to different pianos throughout the community and just play. There were times where I just went back home and I grabbed sheet music and I went out to a piano. How creative and how innovative, and following the hashtag on Twitter and seeing people just recording kids and musicians, it was just such an exciting thing, and I hope SOPAC can continue to bring those types of initiatives to our town.
Oh, thank you. I mean, that's wonderful to hear. You made me think of a quote from the Talmud that goes something like, "If you save one person, you save the world entire." So, you know, if you were the one person that we touched through this, then I'm delighted, but hopefully it was many hundreds of people who were touched by the project.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, our next presentation this evening is from Fred Profeta. Talk a little bit about energy aggregation.
We didn't quite get the message as to where you were located. Thank you for clawing me in about five minutes ago.
Just don't call Vic. No, go ahead.
So a little exhausted running around town. Please excuse that. Yeah, we're here today to talk to you about energy aggregation. I'm here with Javier Barrios, who's with Good Energy, a limited liability partnership in New York, a consultant in the field of energy aggregation. As you know, we have presented to your Environmental Commission, and Trustee Clark reported to you on that report, so we're assuming you're basically familiar with energy aggregation and how it works, and, but you might have questions, so we thought if you do, we're here to answer them. I also want you to understand exactly why I'm working with these folks from Good Energy. I've done my due diligence, and I, in my opinion, these guys are the best in the country at this stuff, and I'll tell you why I say that. Illinois is an energy aggregation state, and so is Ohio. They had done 40% of all the towns, or 40% of all the towns in Illinois. Yeah, I know, I got the households. It's 600,000 households that they're responsible for in Illinois and Ohio, bringing into energy aggregation, and most of those, by the way, are entirely green energy, which is one of the main reasons why I'm interested in this. They, because of the volume that they've dealt with, with third-party suppliers, they can get green energy for just a smidgen more than the generic stuff, because they have that kind of clout, and that's very important to me. And that's, they have, there's a consultant's fee, of course, but the good thing, from the standpoint of the municipality, is you don't pay it. The winning third-party supplier in the auction pays the fee. So this is truly, to my mind, a win-win-win situation. It's no cost to the taxpayer. It's a savings to each household that opts, opts into this thing, well, doesn't opt out, is what I should say, of about $150 to $200 per household per year, and of course, it's green, so you're doing a real service to the environment. So it's hard to think of what's wrong with this. In fact, when we presented it to Berkeley Heights about a month ago, their council said, "We must be missing something. Is this a no-brainer or what?" But that's the way I think of it. And, but, you know, you should, you should ask, you should ask the right questions, and we'll try to answer them. One of the other things that you should know about, and this was not the case when we presented before the Environmental Commission, there are a lot of towns around here right now which are, have, are in a process of considering this, that's somewhere in the pipeline, for example, and that, and the ones that do give you opportunities, if you were to join with them in the auction, because of the volume aspect, you can potentially get better prices. So it's possible to do that with other towns. That's actually the way the energy aggregation law is structured. For example, so Patterson has passed it, I'm second reading, their ordinance is through. They've done it. Montclair is considering it. Berkeley Heights, I mentioned, Chatham, Livingston, Montclair. I know I'm missing some. Bound Brook and Green Brook, by the way, have- Bound Brook and Green Brook, by the way, have already passed it and they're on the cusp of an auction. So, and these are, these are towns that have gone with, with Good Energy. So that's the basic background, that's, those are the new facts I wanted to bring to your attention. Mr. Barrios will talk to you about some of, some more of the, of the details that you might not be aware of. But before we get to him, are there any particular questions that you want to ask of me?
Just a quick one. You mentioned that it's an opt-out, not opt-in. Can you also begin with the alternative energy as the sort of default, the green energy as the beginning position?
Can you start with a?
You mentioned that this is more of a, if, if we pass it, then it would actually be, you would have to opt, a customer, a resident would have to opt out, it would be the default.
Yes.
Do they also, would you begin with the green energy? There's, there would be a couple of choices, I assume. Could the default be?
Oh, well, here's, here's the way you would do it. I have shortcut some things. If you put in your bid specs for the third-party suppliers that you want to be green, then nobody can bid on it unless they're gonna bid, they're gonna say, "Well, we're gonna, we're gonna give you green." And then, then you pick the lowest price of all the ones bringing green energy. So the winning bid would be the lowest that meets that spec. So everybody would automatically be getting green and then, but unless they opted out and stayed with the utility or with some other third-party supplier. And utility, as you know, remains liable, remains responsible for distribution, for delivering it. Now, by the way, it's, it's the opposite with businesses. Businesses are automatically out unless they opt in. And the, the, the general experience has been about 75% of the residents stay with it, 25% will opt out. Any other questions? Okay.
I brought some gansets. I only have a leni. You give it. Thank you. Thank you, Fred, for giving that overview. My name is Javier Barrios, I'm with Good Energy. Thank you for having me up. I'm gonna try to be as brief and hit the most significant points and hopefully you guys will come away with a real good gist. I think Fred did a good job giving an overview. I'm gonna go into the specifics, so I'm gonna try to move as quickly as possible. Good Energy is a DCA-approved, I'm sorry, a BPU-approved licensed and private aggregator. We are licensed in three designations, energy consultant, an energy agent, and a private aggregator, which is allowed to do this type of program. We run one of the largest, if not the largest, DCA-approved aggregations, the Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission, which represents about 92 public sector entities, which are mostly school boards, school districts, municipal facilities, and townships. We've been working with Middlesex for several years now and our firm is approximately about 14 years old, 14 years I've been with the firm, about 13. So, so hopefully I'm here to stay for another 13. But I think just what this program is, and obviously we have all these wonderful green aspects and sustainability aspects of the program, and I think that's kind of the cherry on top. But bottom line is what we're bringing to the community is savings, number one. So the program is a no-brainer, like Fred had mentioned, because it brings savings. And, and so that's the purpose of the program. And, and really, it identifies a market segment which really hasn't had many options in the past. In 1999, when a DECA was passed, the Energy Discount and Competition Act, it really focused primarily on commercial customers. And we work in 19 different states and so when, when deregulation opens up, whether it's telecommunications, most of the suppliers and the competitors that are in that market are gonna really cherry pick and handpick the largest consumers. And so what happens in the states is that you see this, this, this kind of forgotten segment with residential accounts and homeowners and households. So, so it's, it's very, I guess, cost-intensive for suppliers to go after the residential market. And I remember back in early 2000, getting calls from residential customers asking me to help them and it was very difficult. I had no options for them in many of these states. So, you know, so this forgotten segment, what do we do with it? What do we do with this residential market? And I think that there's a really significant momentum throughout the country. New Jersey is one of seven states that actually have passed this law. This law was passed in 2003. But because of the success of Illinois, Ohio, some parts of Massachusetts, New Jersey is now kind of following suit and seeing this might be a good option to fix that problem, this forgotten segment of residential accounts, and really go after it. And the way to do that is through this opt-out aggregation, as Fred was stating. And, and what opt-out, opt-out means as opposed to opt-in, when you opt into a program, think of your magazine subscription or a newsletter. You're signing up to receive information. Opt-out is the opposite. You respond to be removed. So that's what that means. And so what's the, what's the effect of, you know, or what's the difference between an opt-in and an opt-out? An opt-in, the subscription rate to an opt-in program would be about, let's say, in the best-case scenarios, 1% to 3%. And that's a fabulous marketing campaign for an opt-in program. But with opt-out, you know, since you have to respond to remove, you're automatically in the program. And so you have the reverse effect. You have a situation where you have an instantaneous buying group or aggregation. And so that's the beauty, that's kind of the secret sauce of how this process works. It works because you immediately get these numbers, which you need, to go out into the energy markets and look and feel like a commercial industrial customer that's been benefiting from the market over the last 14 years. And just statistically, if you look at the commercial market, eight out of 10 commercial businesses have already switched to a competitive supplier. We call it in New Jersey, a third-party supplier. So they've switched to a 30, third-party supplier. In New Jersey, only 14%, 14% to 15% of residential homes have switched. So many of you have probably gotten some marketing, maybe a gift card, a Visa card in the mail, or you've gotten a telemarketer from another country calling you in and trying to switch. And that's how, how people or most residential customers and, you know, the regular folk switch. They switch from phone calls, from solicitors, from people knocking on the door. But it's not a very effective and efficient way. And on top of that, it's not a sound or way to go out and just purchase your power. Because what you're gonna have is you're gonna have these B-rated suppliers, these suppliers that are focusing on residential markets. There's a lot of multi-level marketing going on, the pyramid scheme. And so you can't really trust these people and it's really not an informed decision. So we believe that the best way to do it is through a government-endorsed program, which actually, the municipal leaders, village leaders, township leaders, go out and get the proper expertise and that's where we come in. To go out and make sure that we aggregate the market, the data properly, do the right analysis, go out to bid, and then we have this, this leveraged buying group that we can go out and really command a good price. And that's the beauty of it. What it means specifically to South Orange, well, you know, if, if everybody, every household participated according to your population and the number of households, it's about $130 to $200 a year. And, you know, that roughly is about, about 1.2 million dollars back to the community. Okay? So 1.2 million dollars that, you know, can really be like a stimulus package, you know? Instead of raising taxes, obviously, there is a discount for, for residents and that's a real benefit to them. So just quickly, because I know I've been talking a lot, a few key points and facts about the program. Your utility continues to be your utility. It's the same 800 number that you call in your bill. There's no two bills. It's just the same bill, better price, number one. Number two, if you have any problems, blackouts, brownouts, you need tree limbs cut, you're not calling us, you're not calling even the third-party supplier, you are calling the utility again. PSENG, JCPL, Atlantic City Electric, all the utilities, they have to service you on the distribution side of, of the service. So they still continue to do that. So that's, that's a win-win there. Another thing is that there's no penalties to pop out of the program. So you could leave at any time. There's no cost for you to be included in the program and we handle all the marketing as far as any educational programs, awareness campaigns, town hall meetings, community meetings, informing the public about this program. And then on top of doing this program, you can earn sustainability points, you can become a green power community, and you could buy renewable energy certificates that are embedded in the program. And your question is, you know, can it be the default? Absolutely. It can be the default. But you also have a choice. And at the end of the day, if you don't want it to be the default, you can have an option to go, at the end of the day, the municipality has to decide which product they're gonna, they're gonna choose. But we can show a traditional product and we can show a traditional plus a green product. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop it here. Hopefully you got the key takeaways. And if you have any questions for me as far as bills or?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first one, is it possible to be involved in this program without the purchase of RECs? Is it possible to go directly to green providers of energy and purchase directly from them? And skip the REC process?
Absolutely, yeah, 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 no, those, those transactions are separate. The most effective and efficient way would be to include it, but you could certainly go on your own and buy RECs separately.
Okay, good. Because I'm a bit skeptical, skeptical about calling it green energy and the REC process because as I understand it, the RECs are, they're certificates, but they, they basically act as an offset program. So if I'm a dirty energy provider and I don't want to sink the money to, you know, upgrade my smokestacks or whatever to properly filter, then I buy RECs, which is basically purchasing green power that someone else somewhere who has a green power plant has produced. So I'm basically purchasing an offset by doing that. And my concern there is that then we are basically giving our money to incentivize dirty plants not to improve their plant or to upgrade.
Well, if I can qualify that a little bit more, if you don't mind. What you're doing is you're buying RECs from an actual renewable generation source, right? So the transaction is between you and that renewable energy source. So you're, you're buying traditional power, or let's call it brown power, okay? You're buying brown power because the, the way the grid is set up, it is, it's, it's cost-prohibitive to have a wind farm right next door or hydro. So it's cost prohibitive. So what you're doing is essentially the RECs are a form of the township of, of South Orange to be an environmental steward. So that, that's really what it does. But your transaction doesn't excuse a dirty generation plant to harness their power. That's already mandated by the renewable portfolio standard that the state has. So that's going on no matter what. So the power that's coming into your home and everybody else's home is already, already has those permits embedded in there, right? So that's already happening and, and, yeah.
Walter, I'm sure, sure you know, you gotta get your power off the grid.
Right, yeah.
You don't, you can't get an extension cord from a, from a windmill. So it's gonna be, you're gonna, no matter how you do it, you're gonna be getting the same generic electricity off the grid that everybody else gets. Question is, what are you doing with your money to incentivize the production of renewable energy? If you buy the RECs, that's money to the generators of the RECs, they got some more money that they can use to, to, to build some more facilities for. You could theoretically make a deal with some wind farm in North Dakota and say, "For South Orange's usage, you pour in the exact same amount," okay? I don't know if the grid regulators are gonna allow that same amount to come in every day. In some days, the windwheels aren't gonna be running. But, but, but if you do it that way, you will not get the savings. Because no, nobody in this business is doing it that way and is able to produce it to get that deal for less than the utilities are doing now. So as a practical matter, it's not available.
Okay. Second question is, as far as the, you know, you go through the bid process, process and then you have a contracted period of time that the rates are, what the rates are. Can you explain a little bit more about what happens when that period of time is over? Do you just renew a new bid or how does that work?
So you enter into an agreement with the third-party supplier that we have consulted for and obviously we, we put together an auction. And it's a two-year period. After that period is up, we're gonna go out to bid again to all the 30, you know, the set suppliers that we have in our bid. There's 67 licensed suppliers, or third-party suppliers in New Jersey. So what we do is we go out to the most qualified and responsible providers who have already done the opt-out program because there's so many different steps that we have to manage. So we have to make sure that they know. But when, when it ends, we go, we don't, I, I believe you would need to pass another ordinance or resolution to go forward with the program. And then opt-out letters are usually sent out so people have a chance to remove themselves from the, from the program. And those would have to be sent out once more at the end. But you have to go out to bid and then you have to get a new price and then you have to decide if you really want to continue with the program, if it's successful.
So basically, it's a, it ends up being an every-two-year process. We'll have to pass a new ordinance, but as far as the public is concerned, they will be getting new opt-out letters.
Letters, correct.
Roughly over two years. And will the rate be discussed, presented at that point?
Absolutely, I mean, it would, it has to be discussed. And how we do it now is that we usually have some, you know, bid committee meetings and preliminary analysis, providing market data, you know, how's it looking? What's the tariff? Where's the tariff gonna be? What are the predictions on the tariff? All that stuff has to be reviewed several months before it ends. Several months. We just did a renewal of, of, of about 109 municipalities in Illinois and we're about eight months early on the renewal. And we have had discussions over the last six months and it was a long-term contract. So we're definitely gonna be early on, on discussing what's the best option for the renewal.
Javier, nice presentation and Fred as well. Does, it seems pretty great. I have two questions. One's just a very tactical one. On the bill, does the utility tend to do comparison pricing, showing the, the current price and what you might have had if you stayed with the utility?
Yeah, one, one thing I missed to explain is that there's a very good vetting process that the law has put in place. So if you read the law specifically, it's, it states that you have to set up LDC agreements with the utility. And when you do that, the BPU and the ratepayer advocate has to review it and make sure that the rates are lower than that price to compare, price to beat. Along with that, there is a price to compare on the bill, so you'll always know where, how you rate during the month. Obviously, in some cases, you're higher than others. We're looking at the, the rates at around 10 to 10, 10.5 and market rates right now are around 8.8, 8.6. So it's a nice, nice spread there.
Okay. My other, the other question actually is a page you have, page 18, where it says, "The GEA can potentially help your community develop," and it lists six other bullets. So besides the economic benefit, I am curious, it mentions scholarships, municipal grants, park and recreation events. Where is that?
You know, it's, you know, I think the program is more of a, a good sounding board and with PR and everything, you can kind of do some, some, you know, fun efficiency stuff and, and maybe, you know, potential, I know we're talking to some of our attorneys to see if it's allowable to do a grant. The law specifies that you can't benefit in any way as municipality, can't earn from or get a fee from this program, like, you know, sort of like tax dollars. But we're checking to see if maybe there's something where we can create an efficiency grant or a scholarship. And so we're reviewing that right now with attorneys, they're giving us an opinion and that would be a really nice thing. We do it in Illinois all the time. It's just a feel-good, wonderful thing to do, you know, and it gets a lot of good PR out there, especially a city like you guys who are very sustainability-friendly. So I think that's one of them.
Thank you.
I got a few questions. One is, this presentation that you gave, is do you have it available in a PowerPoint that we put on our website?
Of course, yeah.
So maybe Fred will send that to somebody or send it to me. The opt-out, can you opt out any time during the year?
Yes.
And when the, do we have to do public hearings on this kind of thing, same way?
No, good question, no.
And do we, you rebid this every year, I assume, for power?
One that's- When the, when the term is up, yes. You can rebid it at the end.
Has there been any history of the cost of the basic services, that in this case PSC and G? Have there been a history of those prices going up because now their profit's being drained on the top end, so sixty, seventy percent of the bill, they're accounted on making a certain amount of profit from the supply side? They've lost that profit. Do they have, are they gonna raise the prices on the basic services to make up for that? And I'm not saying you'll know that answer, but I'd like to see some...
It's an excellent question.
I'd like to see some kind of historical reference for that, if there, if there...
It, it was, you know, in Illinois, we had that situation where, you know, you know, there's a thousand villages and municipalities and counties or whatever in, in Illinois. And the, you know, out of, you know, five hundred of the largest cities, probably, you know, four-hundred-and-fifty have utilized the program. And there was always a concern about, you know, the way the Illinois Power Agency buys, that they wouldn't have enough. And it, there is an effect because, you know, there's about twenty-five, even probably more, thirty cities that are now gonna start doing this. And, you know, we can have it a lopsided effect where, you know, when they go out to auction and buy for the basic service, there could be a situation where they're, they're gonna buy a lot less. And so the way they buy, they buy in three-year tranches, okay? And so there's always a lagging effect when they purchase power. And so if they don't have enough power, because everybody's migrating from, from the program, you're gonna have less to purchase and less, if the prices are lower, to blend that original rate. So there, there's a, a chance that that could happen. We haven't really seen it too much in Illinois, though. It's kind of, the rates have stayed high, but they've stayed steady. So, I mean, that's my best answer for that.
That's interesting. And Barry or Steve, the question for you is, and when we, if we decide to go this route, when we were gonna pick somebody to, to handle, do we have to do an RFP for this process?
Or, or pay to play?
Yeah, but we're not paying anything.
Does the bid process, does the natural, the bid process naturally basically jump through that particular hoop? Because you're, you're doing a bid process and he would be, we'd be setting up a structured bid and Javier's group would actually be sort of aggregating all of the bids.
Yeah. Okay, can I answer that question? Is that okay? Okay.
There's a statute on this, right? On, on this process, right?
There's a what?
There's a statute that covers this, this aggregation process. And that should answer the question, I would believe.
I don't think it specifies in the statute how it, it would be bid out, but it, you would go, it would be under the normal Illinois and municipal code. So essentially, you can bid this out. You can certainly bid it out for my services as well, I mean, be quite frank. But we have, through the Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission, we're already DCA-approved. So you can join, pass a resolution to join that group and then you're automatically in the buying group. And so you can do this efficiently. We also have another vehicle we could use. We could talk about that later. But that would be the initial way to do it.
And, you know, my final, my, my final comment is, you know, more for, for the board is, I think if we're gonna go this route, if we decide to go this route, I think we should probably have a special meeting on this, invite the public, get real comment on it because it's a pretty serious issue, the same way, you know, with a garbage contract. I can say, you know, my past experience based on phone company bills is that when the phone companies broke up and they started selling it, the services, my phone bill has only gone up, even though the initial promise was our phone rates would go down. So I'm always very skeptical of any of this. And because every time I switch plans, my phone rate goes up another twenty dollars a month. So it's, it's...
Right.
I, I take it that the BPU has regulations too on...
Absolutely. Like I said, the LDC...
I would have to, I'd have to look at the BPU regulations and familiarize myself with...
Can you give us a little more information about those kind of next steps?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, no, I think I explained, Fred had mentioned that, that, and the rate has to be lower than the utility rate. And the rate is a fixed rate. It's not a variable rate. Cannot be floating or anything like the products that you see out there in the, in the market.
If I recall, it, it's part of the statute that the rate has to be lower.
Correct, yes.
Although to Mark's point, I think he's just talking about at some point, you have a saturation level and the, the, at this point, sort of monopolistic utility loses its buying leverage. And so what you have to begin with as a rate negotiation becomes higher.
Well, the utility is really here to manage the distribution side of things, the delivery portion. So you have, you know, if you look at your bill, you have a supply portion, which is the market forces, the generators bidding into the, the PJM market, the, the grid operator. And then you have the, the distribution, which is, manages the lines, the trucks, the customer ser, service. And really, that's the, you know, PSC and G, JCPL, that's a separate entity, separate books. And so they earn money on that side, that, that stable business. Where their supply, they don't make money on the supply. That's just bid out and passed through to the customer. So they don't make money on the market supply, which we are bidding, which we are lowering for the citizens.
They are the provider of last resort.
Correct. The polar.
Okay, are there any other questions, Tom?
More of a question for the board. Is this in one of our standing committees right now, where, where people are diving in a little bit more on it?
Public Works should probably...
Is this in your committee right now?
It's, it's basically, it's just bounced around in the Environmental Commission and the Energy Policy Committee.
Okay.
And we've also talked about it a little bit, just incidentally, in Public Works.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so can we kind of await a recommendation from your committee and then we can decide how to report with this?
Somebody's flashing his flashlight on the, oh, does that mean microphone?
Oh, yeah.
We're sharing. Is that better? Okay. So Walter said that the Public Works Committee will make a formal recommendation to the board.
And just make sure that you guys connect with Mr. Roth there about some of those legal logistics.
Thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Hey, guys, sorry for the mix-up with the location.
Thank you.
Our final presentation for this evening is from the South Orange Village Center Alliance presenting their fiscal year 2014 budget.
I'm Matt Glass. I live in South Orange, I have a business in South Orange, and I'm the chair of the South Orange Village Center Alliance. Thank you for having us in to speak with you tonight. Two purposes for tonight. We wanna update you on what we've been up to since the last time we presented and also we're gonna present our 2014 budget. All right, we have several members of our board here. Thank you for coming. And as soon as that slide gets up, I can officially start.
Do you have a first block?
Barry's, Barry's switching the presentation. Thank you, Barry.
Is it on here, Steve?
I didn't load it, it wasn't given to me.
All right, I'll be right back.
Would you like it or should I like read?
If you read it and we, we can take the, make sure we get the presentation from you afterwards and put it on our website. Because we don't have the feed working to the video anyway, so it doesn't make much of a difference.
Yeah, why don't we just do that?
Yeah, so if you just wanna go ahead and read it, let's just make sure we connect...
It's got a lot, it's got a lot of nice pictures.
Can we connect, can we connect Matt to the...
He's got the right adapters.
Do you have it on a stick?
Steve, he's...
I can put it on a stick.
He's apple, is it?
But it's, I, I put it in PowerPoint, in case you wanted it in PowerPoint. I gave it to you in PowerPoint, actually, so...
The only computer that's moderately connected is, is Barry's.
Is Barry's?
And right now, the feed comes and goes, I'm not sure what the problem is. But we ask for it to be on a stick, so it will be loaded before the meeting starts. And we haven't, I haven't gotten it, so do you have it on a stick?
I can put it on a stick. I emailed it earlier today, but I'll put it on a stick right now. I'm, give me two seconds, I'm sorry.
If we take a, a five-minute recess, I might be able to get it up, once he gives it to me.
Um, well, I think he's just gonna put it on the USB and...
Maybe in the future, we should have hold music. Or in SOPAC, we could probably get talented musicians to do it.
I had that, I'm gonna do some town litter things while we wait. It's the only platform that's on there.
Nice. You and Mark have a little...
I should've worn, yes, I should've worn my Sam and Ty. At least I would've looked better at the stall. But I can...
Nowhere to plug it in.
Hold on one second.
Oh, it's lots of water. It's frozen out. But it's water. I found a sippy cup on my... I love shots.
There it is. And it's a good thing that I have it here, 'cause I can't see that. So, as I said, I wanna update you on what we've been up to and then talk to you about our 2014 budget. The first thing to tell you about is we have some changes to our board and updates to our board. So we are still by ordinance for a total of twelve of us, plus two additional folks, one from SOPAC and Barry and Adam. But we have since added Selena Harrow from Spark House, Leslie Pagani from Bunny's, Kamaya Saliskar, who is our resident. We're very happy to have Trustee Schnall with, Schnall with us. And also Ed Ayuso, developing the gateway, is now our treasurer. Nancy Gould has been our interim director since our executive director left this summer. And I will pause now, and I asked Nancy to come here tonight, 'cause I was gonna praise her and embarrass her. Thank God for Nancy Gould. Nancy Gould stepped in in very short notice. Her last day is gonna be Halloween. And I'll tell you as, why, with exciting news about our new executive director. Nancy has done everything she possibly can to keep us moving and to make sure we didn't lose the momentum that we gained during our first eight months. And I think every member of our board who got to work with her was incredibly impressed with what she did. And her only motive was to make sure that we succeeded. So thank you, Nancy, for everything you did for us. We appreciate it. We do still hold monthly meetings every Wednesday morning now at the 76 South Orange Avenue location, and the public is always welcome. So we had in July our one-year, from when we were formed, conversation with our board. This slide that you see here is our, from our launch event, which was delayed several times because of the hurricane, but we finally had it in, in SOPAC upstairs last year, at the end of the year. And these are the things that we said that we wanted to cover and, as our long-term goal. And all of those things that you see up there, business recruitment, PR, advertising, education training, volunteer cultivation, we decided in July that we actually had hit every single one of them. I put the red circle around events, 'cause we, we didn't live up to what we wanted to with events. But actually, when I tell you more about what's happened since we've had our new board members, I, I do believe that we've covered all of the goals that we started out with. And what I wanna do is take you through how we've done that. So business recruitment and retention is really one of our major responsibilities. We're, we're here to make sure the businesses that open get the support they need and that new businesses know that South Orange is a great place to build a business. So what you're looking at on the screen is the first set of comps of a six-page business recruitment kit. We have volunteers who are ready to go to other towns and ask people if they'd like to come to South Orange. Right now, they don't have any ammunition to take with them. That's what this will be. We're working with ITO, which was the agency that designed our brand, that we got through the grant for the state. And that will be ready, certainly by the end of the year, but hopefully before that. But in general, our idea is to make sure that people know that the momentum in South Orange is moving forward. This is also filled with metrics about the buying power of the South Orange resident and the people that live around here. And the fact that we do, as Mark said, have the busiest train station on the Mars and Essex line. And that the number of eyeballs that see your potential store in South Orange are huge. So under our recruit, under business recruitment and retention, we have a very, very healthy volunteer team, co-chaired by two of our volunteers. And we just had a business owners breakfast, which I'll mention in a second. So it's, it's a pretty robust group that we've got. One of our also major things that, that hadn't been happening before was the infrastructure of downtown, the cleanliness and the beautification. So in partnership with the village and the parking authority, you see the beautiful new tree lights that we have up on Sloan Street in Lot Nine. And we've had interest from other merchants to put it in other places. Not only do they look great, but also from a safety point of view, it's nice. One of our major goals is to get downtown to be brighter. Our maintenance crew, you see Asher there in that photo. We still have Asher, Cornell, and just brought another gentleman. We have the same guys who started with us in January. They're still out there seven days a week, they're still cleaning, and they still get great reviews, people saying that the Village Center is as clean as they've ever seen it. We are gonna make sure that that doesn't wane at all in the new year. New holiday lighting, this is Nancy's love, is holiday lighting. We actually are investing in new holiday lights, that we'll have some this year, and we are, we are investing in more for next year. So the holiday lighting, which are the bursts that are on the, on the light poles, will just add to the existing light. Also, something that we've figured out that we are able to do, we were asked by the village to share in the cost of renovating the trestle lighting underneath the South Orange Avenue trestle. We're gonna actually be able to handle that and pay for that. So we will work with the New Jersey Transit to make sure that the lighting that's up on the, on the platforms is now matched underneath. And that will be permanent, successful lighting, hopefully that never goes away. So we still have a design committee that is very interested in what downtown looks like. And the infrastructure will continue to improve as we move forward. PR and advertising is something that we didn't do lots of before. What you see there on the right was a co-op ad that we did middle of the year in the item of Milburn and Short Hills. And what you see on the left is actually first time we've ever done this. Running very shortly, both in Matters Magazine and in the item is a overall brand builder for South Orange Village Center. So you see, it's got our new brand on it. It's basically asking people to think about South Orange. These are folks from Mars and Round and Communities who probably don't think so much about coming to South Orange to shop. Maybe they come here to eat. So we started that. And then also, something that Lisa Hackett, our former executive director, was very good at is, we have been in the paper a lot. So you see there is the clip of when we launched the mobile version of our website. We've been in the alternative press, on Patch, and in the news record, plenty, more than in all my years when we were, is Main Street. And what we wanna do is just make sure people know what's going on. So we're, we are budgeted and can, hopefully will continue our ad spend for next year to, again, build our brand. Under PR and advertising, we can't ignore online. These are screenshots from today of our website, SOVillageCenter.org, which is still incredibly wonderful and robust and has the best event calendar in town. Our Facebook page is only four short of three hundred, so if anybody on the board is not liking us yet, there is a prize at, as the three-hundredth like. So Facebook is a place where we're communicating with most of our constituents. We do a Where Is It Wednesday? We take a photograph of something in the Village Center and the first person to respond with the correct answer wins a prize. We're just trying to build that community. One of our goals for the rest of this year is to start doing merchant, merchant specials on Facebook. And in the lower right, you see our new car magnets. The car magnets are starting to appear around town. We're starting to give them out, we're starting to give them as prizes, and we'll be selling them. And that is what I call the meatball. So the meatball is the SO, and you will start seeing it more and more places. We had the great, great brand from ITO, courtesy of the state. We wanna use it as much as possible.
Pretty sure they don't want you to refer to it as the meatball, though, right?
I, I don't know. AT&T calls their, their thing the meatball, so...
I'm just saying, as a graphic designer, probably.
Ray, Ray, if you're watching, you can tell me if you don't like the meatball or not. So actually, the, the word volunteer cultivation was used during our first meeting. And interestingly enough, that our most successful volunteer event ever had to do with cultivation. Ben Salmon, our secretary and owner of Kitchen O'Leone Mode, came up with this great idea to plant five thousand bowls around the Village Center. Yes. And then when we said, "Well, maybe we don't have enough time," Ben said, "No, let's do this." So it happened. And we had more volunteers come than we've ever had at any event since I've been in South Orange. And it was, it was a great opportunity for people to just get out, literally get, get on their knees and, and get, get dirty. And people had a great time. And I saw it continue with the police department, with Trustee Column's effort. And I think that what we were starting to get into is that people wanna get involved and they wanna do things. We just give them the right things to do.[1781.50] So, when I started in this position, I said the number one thing is we need more volunteers. And I think that Flower Bomb South Orange showed us that the volunteers are there. We have another volunteer, Lillian, who came to us through our search for our new board members, who is actually cultivating our volunteers and helping us figure out how we can best motivate them and keep them involved. So, I think volunteer cultivation is on the way up. And we're excited, and still offer anybody who wants to come join us, the opportunity to do so. Education and training is really for our board, but also for our merchants. We just had a really successful merchant breakfast upstairs, where we talked about social media. One of our volunteers, who's in the digital media world at the New York Times, spoke to our merchants about how to best use digital media. We're now organizing another meeting where a representative from Yelp is gonna come and talk to our merchants about how to best use Yelp. Many of us from the Alliance went to Montclair, to a statewide, what's called Downtown Revitalization and Management Institute, about placemaking. And it was really actually quite helpful and informative, and we got to see what Montclair does to kind of create that urban feel, which we're looking to create as well. The Brooklyn of New Jersey is what we've been called by some other people, so we don't mind that, and we're gonna keep going with that. But the exciting news is that the state has selected us to host the statewide DMRI in April, in 2014. So, hundreds of people from around the state are gonna come here to Sopac. They will have a full day's of sessions, and as they did in Montclair, we were invited to go out and have lunch in Montclair. They will be invited to come have lunch and shop in South Orange. So, that's a really great honor for us, actually. Events and promotions. So, this is what I said I felt like in July, we were kind of falling down a little bit on. And since then, primarily because of the addition of some new board members, I don't think that anymore. The farmer's market, as you all know, ran successfully. Our last farmer's market is the 30th, is this Wednesday. It'll close up for the season after that. We had a new event called G-Fest, which was an exhibition of 80's vintage BMWs throughout the Village Center, which brought hundreds of people who've never been to South Orange into town. And then we did things that we normally do, like ribbon cuttings. We did a great groundbreaking for Ed Ayuso's new development, the Gateway. And then downtown to sundown is 80-plus concerts that happen every Friday and Saturday night for the entire summer, which you were all kind enough to help us fund, along with Investors Bank. So, that's where we kind of kept things the same. Since, in the last month, not only has Flower Bomb South Orange happened, but we were talking about a restaurant week next spring. We're talking about a Tony-watching event with a local theater company, that will be next year. And we're also talking about not bringing back Celebrate South Orange as it existed, but bringing back a community-wide event that is of the scale of Celebrate South Orange. And we're starting to generate some excitement and some volunteerism. One of the reasons why Celebrate South Orange didn't continue is we didn't have the resources, mostly human resources, to do it. So, from an event point of view, oh, and I don't want to forget, two things. One is called Deck the Halls, D-E-C-K, December, Deck the Halls. It's a window competition. That's gonna happen this winter. And also, Holiday Open House will be back on December 7th. And there was a volunteer community that met and wants to do much, much, much bigger things than we've done before. So, Santa will not be staying in the firehouse. Santa will be mobile, along with several other things that we're gonna talk about. So, the nice thing is the energy about what we're doing with events is back. And I think 2014 is gonna be a big season for us, for events.
And Small Business Saturday?
Oh, thank you, Trustee Schnall. So, actually, Selena Harrow and I met about Small Business Saturday. We've already started doing some internal branding about it. We're gonna do a trestle banner for it, and we're starting to educate all the merchants about Small Business Saturday. If you accept American Express, there's no reason why you shouldn't do this. It's free advertising, you get put on a map on the website. And if your customers register as cardholders, they can get $25 credit on their cards, just by shopping at your store. So, we're hoping to make Small Business Saturday a big event. It's November 30th this year. We're gonna have some entertainment outside. We'll hopefully have some balloons and other things to make the Village Center more attractive that day. Thank you, Trustee Schnall, for reminding me about that. So, additional things, which didn't warrant pictures, because they're a little more dry. Ordinances and code review, we've been involved with. Our services chair, Michael Feinberg, who's here, is leading a team that, looking at the ordinances, we kind of stepped in and talked about sidewalk signs, sandwich boards, which I think that the merchants appreciated. And we are reviewing all the codes and making sure, including the outdoor dining, because we all want more outdoor dining. But we also realize that the current application will maybe shy some people away from doing outdoor dining. Stakeholder advocacy, what our job is, is to make sure if you want to open a business, or you have a business, and you need to talk to somebody in Village Hall, we're here to help. Lisa did a great job with that, Nancy did an incredible job with that. Things like the Exxon Station with their signage, things... Small things, that seem small to us, is a very big deal for business owners. We just developed a brand-new Opening a Business in South Orange packet, which is a folder that has a four-page document about all the things that you need to know to open a business. And then it also has all the permits you would need. So, you can walk into our office, get this packet, and know exactly what to do if you want to open up a business in South Orange. It's similar to being a government liaison, obviously. Having Trustee Schnall on our board is a big help. We want to be as communicative and open with this body as we can. And compliance and fiscal responsibility is what I said from the beginning. We are now getting an assessment from people who never were assessed before. So, our number one thing is that people feel that they are getting their money's worth in what we're doing. And I can tell you, and we're gonna talk about 2014 budget, but we are... I said we won't spend any more money than you've given us, and we absolutely have not. We are coming in very healthily on budget, which is enabling us to do other things around town, like the tree lights, like the trestle lighting, and like investing in holiday lighting for next year. So, we are being good stewards of your money and of our stakeholders' money. And we are doing everything as above-board as we possibly, possibly can. So, with that, I'm gonna invite Ed to come up and just join me, in case you guys have questions. So, the full budget, you should have received as a PDF. These are highlights of the budget. So, the number one thing I want to mention is that the Village's contribution overall stays the same. There is no increase whatsoever. The advisory committee that put together the Improvement District a couple of years ago, put together a five-year plan of assessment revenue. Our revenue in year one was $36,000, which was 14% of our budget. The suggested revenue for 2014 was $71,000. That was almost double what the first one was. We determined, as a group, our board did, that we actually didn't want to do that. So, if you look at that second-line item, the assessment revenue was $53,500, which is an increase from last year. But it is not the increase that either, that anybody would've expected, based on what the advisory committee did. We're keeping other things the same, individual donations. We're about to go into our campaign, so, you know, our assessment is only a very, very small portion of our budget. So, we are looking for public support to help us keep doing the things we're doing. There are some pass-throughs that the board gives us money, we pay for things on the board's behalf. And then we're looking for income from events, from sponsorships, and we're gonna put the meatball on lots of other things. So, Trustee Clark, you can buy hats and shirts and vests, whatever you need to do. We're gonna hopefully get some income on doing that, too. So, our total income is $266,925. The Village contribution at $168.5 is still the primary funding for the organization. As we've discussed, our goal over that five-year plan is, we stayed even this year. Our goal is that eventually, the Village contribution does come down. As the, as we become a more mature organization, we can get more corporate sponsorships. Yes, our assessment will increase. We feel that the Village should be able to reduce its contribution to this organization. So, on the expense side. Administrative and human resources is the largest portion. We are planning for an executive director and a business recruiter slash admin, which honestly would've been hired in this year if our original executive director had stayed. So, one of our new executive director's first roles is gonna be to try to find a new assistant. So, that will happen certainly by first quarter. Our business services recruitment and retention stays pretty much flat to what it was last year. We put a little more into marketing promotions and events, to make sure that we can buy those ads, like the ads we started to do with ITO this year. And our organizational miscellaneous is really pretty much the same. So, again, our expense is $266,925, it matches the income. As I said, you have your detail in the PDF that I gave that does line by line. And Ed and our CPA will be doing a full actuals as to our 2013. We're just not done with that yet, as we get towards the end of the year. Are there questions about the budget side of things?
I don't have questions on the budget, but if...
Okay, I have one more surprise thing to say. But then we, plenty of questions, whatever you need. You're relieved, I guess, my bodyguard.
Great job, Ed.
He's just my arm candy, that's all he is.
He makes good arm candy.
Then, in fact, you made a presentation to the finance committee of this budget.
Yes. Which we appreciated the chance to sit in a small group and actually talk through things. And we took your advice about how we designed it, so that was actually, and we'd love to do it that way from here on in. Okay, so, the last thing to leave you with, is I mentioned that Nancy's last day is Halloween. And that's because our new executive director starts November 4th. We're really excited about our new executive director, who would be here tonight, but he is actually visiting his family in Florida before he starts his new adventure here in South Orange. His name... Wouldn't it be funny if this didn't work, and then I just leave? His name is Bob Zuckerman. Bob, most recently, was the executive director of the Lower East Side Business Improvement District in the city. He was there for four years. So, he has run a million-dollar, very successful bid, which is in probably one of New York's most changing neighborhoods. He helped design Day Life, which is a brand-new event. Because many people know the Lower East Side only as a nightlife location, so he helped design Day Life, which brought 10,000 people during the day. The nice thing about Bob is not only his experience, he's run actually three organizations in the nonprofit world. He ran for city council in New York City, he was on the community board. He was raised in Livingston, right over the hill. He went to Livingston High School, he went to Emory, and then he got his law degree at American University. And the wonderful thing that's happening is, right now, Bob and his husband Grant live in Jersey City, and he's been commuting into the city. And they just bought some land in South Orange. So, they're moving here in the first part of 2014. And that's really in the stage of his career where he wants to be. He wants to be able to work in a place that he cares about, and that he can put all his energy towards. So, we're incredibly excited. He spent a few days with Nancy. Trustee Schnall was on our search committee and got to meet him. He's a really good guy. And I think we are in the perfect place right now to have Bob join us. He's excited about what he's seen. He came out to the flower bombing. He'll be here on Halloween. And as I said, he begins on Monday. So, we will have an event in December, which we're hoping to have a public event, kind of the annualized version of our launch, to show everybody what we've been up to and get more public input. But that's also when we'll be introducing Bob to the whole community. So, that's the great news that I have to finish.
That is great news, and I had the fortune of meeting him last week. Nancy introduced, Nancy Gould introduced me to him. And I was very encouraged by just the exchange and conversation, and his tremendous experience and background. And also, I was quite pleased that he was going to move to the Village. I think that is such a benefit to have someone live in the community that they're helping to build and improve the quality of life and options for everyone here. I have a couple of questions for you. One regarding getting back to the businesses that are members because of where they are.
Within the district.
Yes, within the district. What does their participation have been? Are they engaged? Are you getting feedback from them? What type of feedback are you getting from the businesses?
I think we are getting decent feedback. I think we could get more. We actually put together a landlord survey, because we really wanted the building owners as well. And we got medium response to that. The number one thing is that our email, our door, whatever, is always open. You know, our, this deck will be up on our website, all our minutes are on our website. We want people to know what we're doing. Our meetings are at 8:00 AM. We don't have snacks or bagels or anything, but Trustee Schnall could bring, if you want. We want more involvement. We want people to be more involved, especially the stakeholders. Partially is, we're not getting tons of people saying that they don't like what we're doing. I'd almost, that wouldn't be so bad to hear. But we are, you know, for instance, things like the tree lighting, the trees on Sloan Street, which really was generated by the Parking Authority, but we were happy to be a part of. That was great response. We have heard from merchants on Sloan Street and around town that they love it, and I think it looks great. And they'd like it in front of their stores. So, it's those kind of things. We've definitely heard it's cleaner. We have a great, you know, thanks to Barry and Adam, our relationship with DPW is wonderful. So, when we get an email from a merchant saying that there's a blank in the alley next to my store, what do you do about it? We get to the right channels, and it gets taken care of. So, we've heard from that, you know, they say about, you know, city governments about picking up the trash. That's one of our major jobs. And we're hearing that actually, we're doing a good job of that. I think once we start doing events more, we'll hear more whether the merchants feel like... Because we need to design events that drive traffic into their stores. We're talking about doing an evening, like a Thursday night, everybody stay open late, have music outdoors, kind of late shopping night. Those are the kinds of things that we want to start doing to get that reaction, so. It's been medium, to be honest. I'd love to hear more from the merchants.
Now, I don't know if this is the place to have the conversation. Maybe it's one of your committee meetings, but your long-term, short-term, the long-term marketing to get residents down. You've shared that with us. But have you thought, talked to some of the stores about maybe having more regular or late nights? Because, you know, for people who work...
It's a little chicken and egg. When we were at our launch, I shared some slides. We went to a statewide workshop last year of a gentleman who speaks around the country, and he talks about the mall mentality. People hate malls, and, you know, malls are the enemy. But the idea is that malls get it. Because if you go to the mall at 10 o'clock in the morning, but some stores are open and some stores are closed, it doesn't work. Everybody at the mall has to stay open from this time to that time. And that's what's tricky in a downtown, is you're not all under one landlord. We've been talking about how do we get people to stay open late? The way to get people to stay open late, and I think our merchants would agree, is to make it worth their while. If they stay open late, and they do business. So, we have to be able to generate the traffic for them to do that. You know, everything from keeping the lighting downtown to, we know that from a restaurant point of view, people come out late. It's just we don't have it for merchants so much. So, we would love to be able to do that. We want to, because, you know, Brooklyn doesn't necessarily shut down at 6 o'clock, that South Orange shouldn't either. So, you know, if we're trying to be a walkable downtown that has an urban feel, we need to be open a little later.
And then one last thing is just a comment. It may be a little far-fetched, but, and it would be some, something in the future, long-term marketing outreach. Because right now, you're focusing on the people and the demographics in South Orange and the New York Cities. We have the train station, which is like 30 minutes from Midtown Direct. We have significantly lower sales tax on everything that's sold. So, it might be feasible to look into some sort of outreach marketing plan to bring people who are right in that area, who can take the train, a 30-minute ride, and do shopping here, and save significant amount on sales tax. I don't know if that's...
Well, it's interesting you say that, because we actually did have a conversation about a Brooklyn event to try to lure people, like this is where you're gonna end up, you know, kind of thing, because so many people do come here. To say that, you know, you can leave the Five Burrows and still have an existence that doesn't feel like you're in a stale suburb, and this is the place that you can do that. So, we were talking about outreach to those communities, kind of young people who are looking to maybe make a move, is to come here.
Thank you. Great job, by the way.
Questions?
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Moving the mic over. With the new executive director, do you expect that he'll take a larger role in the recruitment, and the assistant playing more of an administrative role? Because the experience he has seems to be very strong on the recruitment end. And I think that's what the board's very interested in.
That is what the major, we want to free Bob up. Not the mundane tasks, but the tasks of, this person needs help getting their use permit put through, or that, you know... Those are the kinds of things that we want a good assistant to be able to do, to help do events, go set up for the farmer's market, do those things that in the past, our ED kind of was, you know, the chief, the chef-cook and bottle washer. So, the idea is that this assistant role would be somebody that can handle multiple things, both from an accounting, you know, checks, QuickBooks, so that the executive director, specifically Bob, can have that vision. You know, we've been talking to Bob about, you know, what can we do? And he'll lobby the state if we want something. You know, he's got that experience, and he can walk into any town and really lobby for us. And that's what we want to have this time to do, so yes.
We're certainly fortunate to have him. Congratulations, the state annual meeting, DRMI, here in South Orange. I hadn't heard about that. That's wonderful.
So, Jeff Buehler, who's our contact at Main Street New Jersey, remember, when we switched to an improvement district, we did not stop becoming a Main Street community. So, we are still a Main Street community, we still get the benefits of it. It's not the only one of the year, but there are only a handful of them.
Absolutely.
And there were hundreds of people in Montclair who were there for it, and it was really great. So, we're really proud and happy. And Sopac has already told us that we're on their calendar, so we're excited about it.
Well, I know Trustee Schnall will keep us posted if there's anything that the board can do to, you know, welcome these guests into our community. That's certainly a great event for South Orange.
Thank you. And also, I want to mention, Ben did tell me that every single one of the trustees were out planting bulbs. So, we appreciate that. And we appreciate your support all year long. We know that you're relying on us to get a lot done, and we'll keep getting it done.
You make it fun for us. A last comment. I just wanted to also thank Ms. Gould for filling that void for a month. I know from my personal experience, I send a lot of emails. Nancy was incredibly quick to respond in everything that I needed with events, or just wonderful. Thank you so much for stepping in and filling that void during this transition, Nancy.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys so much. One thing, just for the public, who unfortunately won't be watching it streaming, but who may watch the video, and as certainly the carryover trustees will recall, this is a two-step process, the, under the statute that governs special improvement district budget. So, there is a resolution on later tonight for separate action that actually approves the budget, is the language from the statute. But then we still have a public hearing and adoption, has to be at least 28 days. So, we have set it up in the resolution for a public hearing on that budget to be on the November 25th. a public hearing on that budget to be on the November 25th agenda, at which point then it would become adopted. So it is a two-step process. So anyone in the public that did want to address or have any questions or comments about the budget can come on November 25th. And then lastly, I just want to mention, only because Matt's up there, and he obviously is too modest to say it himself, but just in my experience, I think an enormous amount of credit also goes to Matt and the entire SOPA Board. Matt's sort of background in promotions and events has been, I think, invaluable, not to mention just his management and leadership style, and the rest of the Board. They're just an incredibly hard-working group. And I think that is really at the core of the success of the organization. So congratulations.
Thank you. And we are a good, the Board, we have fun. People, meetings are great, right, Steve?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not letting us keep the flash drive. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments. If there's any member of the public who wishes to speak at this time, you can just come to the microphone down at the front here. I don't know if we have a list.
Some people did sign in at the front.
And just state your name and address for the record.
Restu Reeves, 112 Raymond Avenue.
Is it on?
Is that working back there?
Steve?
He's looking at it.
Yeah, I can hear that. Restu Reeves, 112 Raymond Avenue. Can y'all hear me?
Sure.
I can speak loudly. There we go.
Everybody can walk up and use this one faster.
Restu Reeves, 112 Raymond Avenue. A small issue, and I'm maybe tardy to this, so if I am too late, just tell me to turn around, and I'll shuffle back home. I've been told that the light, the red light issue at Raymond Avenue and Scotland Road, that corner, which is where I've lived for about 13 years now, that it's still in play, and that there is some advocacy for light there. I thought that was dead. My opinion is, we don't need a light there. Yes, traffic comes by there at a brisk pace, it always has. Yes, it's distressing when I stand there with my kids and people keep passing and not stopping. But that hasn't gotten any worse over a decade. And as much as we want this place to be like Brooklyn, I don't think we had in mind more red lights. So I live there, my family lives there. We know what it's like. It's just not necessary to have that light there. If you want to slow down traffic, I would put police there more frequently than we do. Pull them off the public utility details where they're sitting around, and have them issue some tickets, and that would probably slow down traffic a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. Jason Grant, 144 Mercer Place. I'm here about the parking situation in, I lose connection here, in Tuxedo Park. I understand, I can see here that an ordinance is up for first reading tonight, and I just had a question. Number one, what does the ordinance actually say? I haven't had a chance to review it at all. And number two, if it seems like what we kind of want, how long would it take to implement?
Well, we'll get to all the questions at the end. So thank you.
All right.
Brent Ferrand, 147 Mercer Place. I'm also here to speak about the parking issue in Tuxedo Park. I want to thank the Board for responding so rapidly to residents' concern about our neighborhood becoming a parking lot for Seton Hall. So we certainly do want to thank you for your rapid response to that, and also thank Seton Hall as an institution that responded to your initiatives quickly and honestly. So we're no longer a parking lot. But I do want to let the Board know that there are still numerous students who clearly will not respect the integrity of our neighborhood as a residential neighborhood without being forced to do so by restricted parking signage and police enforcement, particularly on Mercer Place. And I know on Milton Place, the parking has begun to build up again. We have a number of cars that stay parked in front of residents' homes until 10:00 p.m. at night. Sometimes several cars in a row, forcing delivery trucks to park quite far away from the house to make delivery. So I would like to urge the Board to move as quickly as possible on the amendment of the parking ordinance for the town to include the streets that are indicated there. And I'm hoping, because I haven't seen the ordinance as amended, that it will read that there'll be two-hour limited parking on both sides of the streets for, say, an 11-hour period from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. or something like that. I know at one point, there was a suggestion that there'd be no parking on one side of the street at all. And I think that would be an inconvenience to a lot of residents. The two-hour parking, limited parking, works well on all the other streets in Tuxedo Park. And that's what we'd like extended to the four streets that aren't covered by it. Again, thank you for your response last time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Yes. Good evening. Mayor Alice Paul Torby, Trustees, Councilman Marcus. I have two questions that were not answered by the Village Center Alliance. The first question is, is the financial package and salary benefits for the new Executive Director? My second question is, is will the new people be hired for the new assistant in South Orange Village Alliance?
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, I'd like to close public comments. I'm going to try and address some of the issues that were brought up quickly. The first being the light at Scotland and Raymond. About maybe eight months ago, the Board, by resolution, asked the county to do a whole number of traffic safety measures on Scotland, one of which was to look into installing a traffic light, a red light, at the intersection of Raymond and Scotland. It came back up again, because the county just recently notified us that they would like an ordinance, not a resolution, for them to be able to move forward with doing that. So we passed that in our last meeting, and we'll have that up for second reading in our next meeting, to go ahead and move forward with that. The details of the light were not worked out, and kind of left that up to the engineers. And the idea was that, one, is it creates a better pedestrian safety zone, where people can push the button to cross the street across Scotland. And the other is that there's some folks who think that the light will be able to slow down some of the traffic and create a better series of platooning of the vehicles that are on Scotland. As far as parking in Tuxedo Park on Mercer, Milton, this was one of the temporary regulations that I put in place through request of the Board after some of the parking issues came up in Tuxedo Park. At this point, tonight, we do have something on for first reading, although I believe we're going to carry it for another meeting. The intention is to equalize all the parking regulations in Tuxedo Park. And so, right now, almost all the streets have two-hour parking, and South Center Street has one hour. And then Milton and Mercer have no restrictions at all. So I think what folks are mentioning tonight is that there is a few cars that have made their way all the way down to the end of Tuxedo Park, where there are no parking restrictions currently. And so the idea being that if there's restrictions everywhere, it kind of equalizes the parking. And I know that we're going to talk about that a little bit later when we consider the ordinance, as we've been trying to work closely with the Neighborhood Association in Tuxedo Park, to try and get a sense of what the residents do want out of this. And as far as the timeline for it, the ordinance would be passed on first reading and on second reading in a following meeting. So we're looking at maybe four weeks from introduction of first reading until the ordinance is passed. And we'd go ahead and start putting up the signs after that. So, you know, maybe four to six weeks would be kind of a good idea of a timeline there, from when the ordinance is passed on first reading. The questions for the Village Center Alliance, maybe we can forward to the Village Center Alliance. They're not here anymore. So I know the resident that was here might want to stop by the office, the Village Center Alliance office, in our offices in 76 South Orange Ave. I'm sure they would be happy to provide you that information. If you can't get it from them, feel free to reach back out to us, and we can try and get it.
Mr. President, can we post the Village Center Alliance proposed budget before the public hearing on November 25th?
Yeah, absolutely. We should definitely, we should, do we solve the file?
We haven't.
Okay, yeah. So we'll make sure to get that on the website.
Okay.
Absolutely. So this time, I'd like to move on to ordinances for first reading.
令2013-18, an ordinance to amend the Valley and Third Street's redevelopment plan to amend and clarify the definition of live-work units.
Thank you. The purpose of this ordinance is fairly self-explanatory by its title. I know this is in Planning Zone, and Trustee Rosner, I don't know if you want to say anything about it?
Yeah. The Planning Board had approved the project at Third and Valley, but the definition in our redevelopment zone didn't define live-work space. So we went to the village planner and asked him to send a specific definition. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to go home first before the meeting to get the package, but I don't have the whole thing, but I assume it's listed online. But that, and I sent it to all the trustees previously, so that, but that defines the live-work space and what can be in that space, which is no more than 400 square feet, and four units on Third Street, on the first four, the Third and Valley project. You know, that allows for things like architects or artists to work out of there, or minor retail. It still prohibits doctors' offices and so forth. But this way, it gives a clear definition, and it doesn't leave anything open for guest units in the future. And the list came, the wording for the, came from the planner. I did share it with the planning board, who has not officially discussed it yet. And we did review it at the Planning Zone Committee, and the developer himself also agreed that it was a fair definition.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this ordinance?
Yes.
What is the rationale of not having a medical practice in the unit?
It's, the rationale partly is, right now, redevelopment zone doesn't allow it, but the, there was issues with the parking and defining what type of practices would be allowed there. That was, that was it. There was no, there was no, that was it, so.
Was that only live-work units, or was it specifically for the business units on the bottom?
Just live work.
Just live work.
It's the live-work restriction on medical practice.
I would think that it would be something that would be good to have a doctor who actually lives in the physical environment.
Well, thanks to a kind of doctor. I mean, you know, we talked about therapists, or something along those lines, but a doctor actually practicing a medical practice, or, you know, an internist is unlikely to do it in that kind of space. It's not really set up for it. But we, I know we, even though an ordinance coming up later, which we're going to probably get a table and discuss it, Planning Zone Committee first, which deals with the overall issue of medical practices at various parts in the village, and that may, that may take care of that. But there's space on Valley Street that's probably more suitable for medical offices as a new redevelopment.
Why would you want to restrict it? Because if it is too small for a specific type of medical practice, then they wouldn't come there.
I can't give you any one reason, but it was the committee's feeling that we should not allow it, and the planner had recommended against it, and there wasn't an overall desire to have it, so.
And I think, my recollection is, it's not just medical offices, it's personal services in general. And I think the thinking was, given the size of these units, and given that they're in conjunction with the residential, it was to stay away from sort of the uses that generate a lot of client traffic, like you're going to have a bunch of people sitting in a waiting room. And so it was also personal services, it was beyond just medical. It was, I think, largely driven by the size of the units and the fact that they're kind of integrated with the living units. So most of the permitted uses are more, where a professional may be sort of doing their own work in their office, but not having, like, a revolving door clientele.
Well, would you restrict the CPAs for tax season?
Well, I don't know whether CPA would fall under the, it says neither medical office nor personal service uses.
No, that's professional service. That's not personal.
Doing your taxes?
No. I think I agree with this recommendation on the live-work space, but to your other concern about the other businesses, regular size, where they were prohibitive, I would be open to those spots being allowed to have medical offices. So I'm in agreement with you. I understand your position. But for this particular entity, and based on what the administrator just shared, I would support what is being presented.
Well, I'm questioning the rationale, because it's in conflict with the other one, where we're allowing it to occur on the off-streets.
Well, the other spaces would potentially be larger, and would have to deal with parking. When you, even if medical offices were approved in other spaces, they still have to deal with the parking ordinance. In this particular live-work space, they would not have to deal with it. And there's a limited amount of parking, you know, for the public in these spaces. And the thought was more, the thought was more along like, people who work in their home, not necessarily invite people to come in, but to work in their home. But in the off-chances, some people do have spaces, it's more the type of business that will attract people who walk.
So is there a limitation with parking that goes along with those businesses?
No, not anymore. But doctors have a very specific thing, a very specific regulations for parking in all other ordinances.
I understand that.
And these live-work spaces too, right? You can't have any paid employees coming in to work in.
No, you can't have any paid employees.
So that's part of the issue, I think, with the doctors' offices too, is that usually there's some administrative staff.
Well, you can have one employee, but you can't have, you can't have a staff. As I said, there's other spaces in the town that are more suitable for medical offices.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes. In terms of the title, an ordinance to amend the Valley and Third Street redevelopment plan, does this definition also have to be included in the CBD redevelopment plan? Or is this sufficient?
This is only in that, in fact, to my knowledge, that's the only redevelopment plan that has live-work units.
It is the first time, but is it worthwhile to include this definition in case we do see more of these pop up?
Well, I think if the decision ultimately was made to allow live-work units in other CBD districts, then this would probably logically be the definition we would use. But until we make that decision, you know, I think it just is on the books. The only one that allows it is the Third and Valley, so that, you know, there's nothing to enact it for right now, because it's not a permitted use in any of the other districts.
Trustee Rosner, the language that is in the agenda packet is slightly different, not substantive, from what I shared with the Board after the last meeting, after doing your committee report. I saw no objection to it, but it is slightly different from the version that I sent out to the Board of Trustees after the meeting. So I didn't see anything objectionable in it, though.
Okay.
And this is actually what we had originally intended to be included in the change. When we did the change, the thing, this was the definition that we originally said we were going to put into the thing, and for some reason, it was left out.
Okay.
Okay, I move the ordinance.
Okay, moved by Trustee Cullen.
I second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. Do we have the roll, please?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ward?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Present.
Is that a yes or a no?
No, it's present.
Or abstain?
It's present.
You can say one of three things. Yes, no, abstain.
I can say present, too.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, no, or abstain?
Present.
That's not an answer.
Yes, it is.
Pass.
It is not.
Steve?
Counsel, can you weigh in on this semantics?
Yeah, sure.
That's noted as an abstention.
It's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be recorded as a, as an abstention.
As an abstention.
He can.
Trustee Levison abstains.
Yes. Yes.
The ordinance 2013-18 was introduced upon first reading and passed, but the abstention. Trustee Levison.
Thank you.
Resolution 2013-19, an ordinance approving a draft revised and restated charter for the township of South Orange Village, and authorizing a submission of the same to the New Jersey Legislature for enactment into law.
Thank you. Okay, this is something that has been a long time coming. The South Orange Charter Review Committee submitted its recommendations to the Board of Trustees in June of 2011. Every 12 years, we have to reevaluate our charter and make a recommendation, like what was said to the Legislature, for us to continue our unique form of government. What we have before us tonight is what this... What we have before us tonight is what this board agreed to consider in our last strategy planning meeting. And so what we have is a couple of different things. One is all the housekeeping and kind of logistical items, gender neutrality, I think, and a whole bunch of typos, deferring to state statute where applicable, and a handful of other kind of housekeeping items were kind of one category of changes that are included in this updated charter. The three major changes that are worth noting are the three changes that were put to public referendum. And that is, one, dropping township from the township of South Orange Village. Two is changing the titles from village president to mayor, trustee to council, to council member, and Board of Trustees to council. And three is instituting stipends, not for this current group, but for the next group, at a rate of $2,400 for village president, $1,800 for trustee. Those are the three major recommendations out of four that came from the committee, the fourth being moving the election to November, which was not put on the ballot for public referendum, and was not agreed to be considered in this round of the charter update. Mr. Rother, is there anything that you wanted to add there?
Yeah, yeah, and, and there, there is an omission here. When, when on Thursday, we decided to reintroduce the ordinance that had been introduced before, it came with the Black Line Charter, which has the, the village name changed, but doesn't have the stipend and doesn't have the title changes in the attachment. So I think, there are a number of ways you can handle that, but I think the most effective way, since we had a black line attached, we should carry this to the next meeting and, and have a corrective black line attached.
Let me just add, I went through the, there's a few things also from the charter itself. To Steve's point, it, it talks about the compensation, which kind of would be superseded by the recommendation of providing that.
No, no, in addition to, it wouldn't be superseded.
In addition to, I'm sorry.
The compensation would stay the same, it would just add a provision for stipends.
For the specific amount, we wanted the amount in there.
Exactly, exactly, yep.
And then what it looks like is we began the process of crossing out Board of Trustees and village president, but then kind of towards the end, they still remained in there.
No, no, it's, it's not, it's not complete. This, this was an old version that came with the original ordinance when it was initially suggested for adoption two years ago, I think. So it, it, it has to be updated. This is not a correct version for adoption.
There was the other thing, since we're just going over this, Steve, the village council, moving to village council, and then your village council, within the minutes of the Charter Review Committee, we had also recommended, instead of having village council, village council, to have a village attorney and the village council, just so it didn't get confusing, and so if we can note that in the charter as well.
Sure.
And just the consistency, I would agree, if we, if we table this for now, since we are, the ordinance is based on the attachment, we definitely need to clean up those items first, I think, before voting on it.
Yeah, and one, one other thing, that there seems to be, both of these were presented in here, which is South Orange Village or Village of South Orange. It looked like it was Village of South Orange, when you look at the old minute books.
South Orange Village. Historically, it was the Village of South Orange.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, historically it was the Village of South Orange, but the Charter Committee said South Orange Village. So, I mean, that's a matter of choice for the trustees.
Is there preference?
Well, I think they switched it when you added the township. Obviously, you had to put one versus the other, and they went to township and then shifted the village to the end, so the question is, is the desire to go back to the original, which was the Village of South Orange per the historic documents from 100 years ago, or is it to just drop the township off and be South Orange Village?
Yeah, all the old stuff says Village of South Orange. All the minute books and everything like that, everything historically says Village of South Orange. So, my personal preference, just between the two, if one is historical and one isn't, I'd rather go with what we used to do, but it doesn't really matter a lot, unless someone has a very.
For the town name, you want to be historical, but for trustees and village president, you want to be unhistorical?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So it's a good mix of both.
I do believe, Mr. President, I do believe there was a specific, maybe financial issue, with wanting to keep village at the end by just eliminating township in the front. I, I remember that the committee discussed it, right, Mr. Rother? Which way that went, and maybe it was easier.
Something about signage. I vaguely remember that, but, but I, I'm not sure that, that really can be done. You're not going to go out and paint out township on the signs.
There is something, we, I can go back and look in the minutes and disseminate to the board, but there was something very specific about South Orange Village.
Yeah, if you want to try and find that, I mean, just considering Village of South Orange is what it was, maybe we can move forward with that unless you find something that's persuasive enough for us to do something different.
Maybe the Alliance then, too.
Oh, and, and one other, one other fact, you, you indicated, President Torpey, that, that the stipend would be effective in the next cycle. The stipend won't be effective until the state legislature adopts this, which is probably going to be more than one cycle.
20 years from now, but I want to make sure that it's just very clear that we're not voting on stipends for ourselves.
Yep.
So even if there is a practical logistical delay in that going, and it's implicit that it's not going to be until the next board, we should, we should explicitly state it as well, that we're not voting for money for ourselves.
I also want to just reiterate what I think I heard trustee Rosner say, and I'm not sure anybody else heard it, which is that if we go with Village of South Orange, then the South Orange Village Center Alliance, they have an issue.
I don't think so. I think it's South Orange Village Center Alliance, the DCA. I don't think those two are linked.
I like the branding possibilities of going South Orange Village, simply because of what Walter and trustee Clark said. We have SOVAC, South Orange Performance, I forgot, Art Center, we have the South Orange Village Alliance, so everything is consistent, and it's, it's good branding for it to be consistent, but I'm not going to fight over it. It really doesn't matter to me whether we are Village of South Orange or South Orange Village. I'd prefer, for branding purposes, for it to be South Orange Village.
And that, that is the question that was on the ballot, I believe, before and after.
How was it worded on the ballot?
South Orange Village.
Oh, wasn't?
Removing township.
If you want, we could have, we could have throwback days.
That's what I thought it said, I thought it just said removing township from the name, but did it also say?
I'm pretty sure.
Not that these were binding questions necessarily, but.
They weren't, but it was the way that the question was.
And not to say that the vote would be any different at all if it had said Village of South Orange.
Well, do you want to table it with certain proviso?
Yeah, we can table it for the next meeting, and we just need to make sure we get the corrected version.
Well, what will be the corrected version? I mean, what, what will we be using for the name of the village?
I would say we should defer to what we did historically, which is Village of South Orange, unless there's a reason not to.
We have to come through a consensus.
We do.
I kind of prefer South Orange Village myself.
I do, too.
All right, let's get a consensus. What did we say?
I, I prefer South Orange Village.
Trustee Rosner?
Don't care.
Abstain, you're present?
Are you present?
I'm present, but not at. Village of South Orange.
I, I prefer South Orange Village.
We'll go with SOV, South Orange Village.
All right, South Orange Village it is.
Yeah, the, the Charter Review recommendation said change township of South Orange Village back to its pre-1978 South Orange Village name, which I don't think actually was the pre-1978.
Which was. Okay.
Okay, so we'll put that together with South Orange Village in it. Do I have a motion to table this for the next meeting?
I did.
Motion by trustee Levinson?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Present? Okay.
President Torpey just, not trying, I don't want to slow that down at all, but I was just curious when we might have a public discussion, or at least board discussion, that fourth part of moving to November. Is there a timeframe?
It's in, it's in there. So it's in the charter change?
No.
No.
You have to fill out a chart form.
Well, it's, it, the, the way the charter is written, it, it leaves it open to an ordinance adoption pursuant to the statute, so the charter, the charter.
You need to talk into the mic.
The charter recognizes that the, that it's currently a May election, but the charter also leaves it open to subsequent action by ordinance under the statute, which allows a, a change to November, so that any time that the trustees would like to change the election date from May to November, they can do it by a simple ordinance change, and nothing would have to be changed in this document.
So it's a separate item, basically?
It, it, in essence, in essence, what, what we did was, in, in this change, was to say, this is no longer a charter matter, this is a matter for ordinance adoption.
Done, thank you.
One, I'm sorry, one more comment. Mr. Rother, within the marked up track changes, there was one thing about passing resolutions, is being present and voting. The last language was just present, and the Charter Review Committee added and voting, to avoid against the situation where a lot of people.
Yes, right, 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 right.
But then I saw the and voting marked out, so if you can double check that again in the revised draft.
Yes, no, that, that was a critical point, yes.
That was a very, I felt it was a substantive issue. Okay, thank you.
Okay. That has been tabled for the next meeting.
Ordinance 2013-20, an ordinance to amend the Central Business District redevelopment plan.
Thank you. Basically, this is an ordinance pursuant to the discussion that we had in the last meeting about first-floor retail spaces and permitted uses. Mr. Lewis, is there anything you want to add about that?
No, other than, and I did email the board upon, we, we listed this on the agenda and were anticipating receipt of the, what we thought was going to be a relatively straightforward, simple thing, and then what the planner had provided was a more comprehensive rewrite, which I did subsequently then provide, and we did today then receive from the planner a summary, and, and in light of all that, the recommendation, at least from me, was to pull this at the moment, have Planning and Zoning Review, the full extent of, of all the recommendations in there, some of which, even just in conversations this evening with members of the Planning and Zoning Committee, were not vetted with Planning and Zoning some of these changes, which I had not been aware of, so everybody now has, I guess, the recommendation from the planner, but, and as well as sort of a listing of where the changes that, that were recommended, recommended, but the suggestion is to, to table this, have it reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Committee, and then, then bring it back with whatever the recommendation is.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions or comments?
Yes, can we also have the village planner provide us the actual real document with the colors on it, because we can't still see the maps from what was provided. We got it in black and white, and so we can't actually see the boundaries.
And I think because of when I, when it was scanned into the package.
Yeah. There are some more substantive changes based on the planner's memo, so if the board has a chance to go through and either submit the comments to trustee Rosner, we'll, we'll get through it at the next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, but there's things about lot coverage, I know she's going to be attending, and perhaps the village administrator as well, so if you can review those and we can move pretty quickly, just as long as we get everybody's feedback in a timely manner.
Okay, well, let's, I mean, let's, let's table this till the next meeting, is Planning and Zoning Meeting before the next board meeting?
Yeah, we're, we're going to be doing a meeting, we have to change the meeting dates, so we're going to meet November 11th at 7:30 PM, and I'll, I'll invite the planner, but I'm also going to have the chairman of the planning board and the Board of Adjustment there, so the chairman of the planning board, I'm going to ask him to look at this as well, and get input from the planning board members, because this does have to be approved by the planning board at 1.2, and I think we should go through the process on a parallel path, rather than waiting for us to pass it, sending it to the planning board, and then having to come back, because it could be substantial, substantive changes from the planning board. Recommendation, that we don't have to follow what they say, it's probably good form to do, at least consider their suggestions before we make it final. So I would agree with table on this, perhaps, probably more likely it's going to be two months before we get back to it than one month.
Well, let's try for two weeks. Do I have a motion to table this to the 13th?
I move to table this and refer to the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Second.
Okay, so we have, can you just restate that motion?
I move, I move to table this motion and refer to the Planning and Zoning Committee for its.
I just wouldn't table something and refer it, maybe pending review from the Planning and Zoning Committee?
Fine.
Okay.
I'll second.
So the motion was to table this pending review from the Planning and Zoning Committee. It's moved by trustee Chanel, seconded by trustee Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Ordinance 2013-21, an ordinance to amend the code of the township of South Orange Village, Section 152-36, Schedule 4, with respect to parking on Cameron Road, Mercer Place, Milton Place, and Sinclair Street.
Thank you. This was, this is the ordinance that was relevant to the discussion earlier about parking in Tuxedo Park. I think there was an interest in perhaps tabling this, getting some review and feedback back from the Neighborhood Association. Trustee Cullen, you were kind of taking point there?
I'd like to request at the board table, this one as well, as discussed, and I can see the benefits of, of what was proposed, but as stated at the last meeting, I've been working with the leadership from the Tuxedo Park Neighborhood Association, and they're in the process of gathering feedback right now from their residents, and we have the fire department looking at some of the actual curbs and the turns in terms of emergency vehicles, so while there's the public safety aspect, there's certainly the quality of life aspect, and it's a little bit easier to allow the neighborhood to kind of drive that ship. And so, for the time being, the timeline on this is, we would certainly have something to discuss at conference agenda, and whether we might just be picking this up off the table and amending it, or introducing something new, it, it won't take more than the next month to have something for this board to review, so I move to table it.
Well, I have a comment to it. We talked about this in the legal committee. One of the issues is, is that if we have restricted parking to our parking on both sides of the street, it still doesn't fix the problem of narrowing the street so that emergency vehicles cannot get through, and one of the things I would like to possibly have looked at is maybe alternate street parking, where you restrict parking on either side of the street for some days during the week, so that you have at least one, one side of the street clear, and so you can have emergency vehicles going through it.
So, for example, on Monday.
Wednesday and Friday.
The odd numbers of sides of the street you can park on, and on Tuesday you can't, you park on the even side.
I find that, you know, it's like the worst, the worst memories of New York City coming back, but, but the.
It's a practice issue.
I don't, if, if the two hour, I don't know what the parking issue was before, before the seating hall, I don't know how many cars were parking on the street. If the two-hour restriction keeps only a minimal number of cars on the street, then I don't think the safety issue is there, but I don't know if we have any counts for that, or any official, I think we'd have to ask the Neighborhood Association with the, well, I mean, they, they might know, but I don't know if that's an official thing, you know, but we have to have a Neighborhood Association, at least have the meeting, and find out how many cars, because we were talking about two cars parked on the street, and I don't think we need to go to alternate side of the street, I think the two hour, but if there's, if there was too many cars parked on the street anyway, then that, then that would bring up that issue, the safety issue.
Well, I think the whole point about the emergency situation was the safety issue that.
But the two-hour parking may deal with that problem.
And I, and I think this, this particular ordinance is very narrowly tailored to streets that either currently have no time restrictions, or I think in one instance has a four hour, and it's Cameron, Mercer, Milton, and Sinclair. This would only then make them consistent with everything else, two hours, Monday through Friday, eight to six, so if anything, that would improve any public safety concern, it's certainly not going to make it worse. So I, I agree, I think there is a much bigger issue in terms of the overall restrictions down there, going to alternate side, going to one side, public safety concerns, but I would just hate, these people are, and, and what you're seeing is a much higher concentration just on those streets because they have unlimited, so all the students park there, and nobody parks in the two hour, so if these go two hours, at least it's probably more evenly distributed among all the streets, which if any way, in the short term, would probably help the public safety concern, you know, so my, my thinking is, you might consider just going with this one, and then if it takes two, three months to hash out the rest of this and get the police and public safety and alternate side, you can do that, but otherwise, you know, not only did we hear from the residents tonight, we've gotten a number of emails from residents that this has become an increasing problem, as all the students have learned, just go down three streets over and everybody parks there, but that's just for consideration.
A couple of questions I have is, what is the enforcement on two hours, you know?
That's another issue. Yeah, well, that's another issue.
You know, who's going to enforce it, so, and, but then, so that's just a question out there, and then my other thought is, though, maybe why don't we start with two hours and see if, if it is effective over a period of time, maybe six months or whatever, and then the residents can come back and say, yes, this has made a difference, or no, we need more restrictions or a different solution, but Trustee Column is going to be working with the, the, the neighborhood organization anyway and get their real feedback, because they live there.
And they've seen this, they've now seen this, but at the time, they had not known that this was going to be proposed, so for the time being, we, we don't have the leadership of the Neighborhood Association that we've been working with, actually getting feedback from the residents on this. I have nothing against this, I think it'll certainly help. It'll certainly help, but I am asking for my colleagues to just, I let the leadership know in Tuxedo Park that I would move to table this, until they just share it.
Can we make sure we get that feedback from them by the next meeting?
We'll get it immediately, but, like I said, we just got this in our packet on Friday.
Obviously, the feedback from them is important, but us taking action is also important, you know, we can gather feedback for a year, but let's get it done.
Well, I think I was asking, in part of that consideration is to look at alternate side, because that, that allows us to enforce easily, you don't have to mark tires or understand how long people are parked there.
Trustee Column is going to take it to the, again, the Neighborhood Association and get their feedback, and then their feedback will guide us.
We were, we were preparing to bring something, sorry, we were preparing to bring something forward in November anyway, it was just, this was an additional consideration that, that we just didn't know about, so again, I made the motion to table.
I, I, I was just going to point out that, to Trustee Levison's point, I, I understand the wisdom of the alternate side of the street parking, just because it makes the enforcement easier, as far as you just have to drive by and see who's on which side. I don't see that that addresses the safety concern issue, as far as the narrowness of streets and curves.
It allows parking only on one side, so...
But how would that be different than what's proposed here, where the...
What's proposed is that you can park on both sides, but it's restricted to two hours. So you...
All right, so you're basically, so what you're saving is basically a curve, you're
making sure there's at least two car widths on any curve, but...
Or any street.
Okay, so there was a motion by Trustee Column, and a second by Trustee Davis Ford, to table this to the 13th. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, tensions? Thank you.
I move that ordinance 20-13 be scheduled for a second reading and final passage.
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
Our 20, 2013-18 be scheduled for a second reading and final passage at the November 25th, 2013 board meeting, and a public hearing be held at that time for reference ordinance, and the acting village clerk be authorized to take necessary action to public, public notice for such hearings.
Okay, there's a motion?
Second.
Second by Trustee Column, all in favor? Any opposed?
We will now address the table resolution. Resolution 2013-246, resolution selecting option for a new rescue squad facility authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications consistent therewith. This resolution was tabled on October 17th.
Thank you. I don't see any need to remove this from the table, I don't think, Mr. Lewis, or I expected us to actually be able to consider it in this meeting, considering the timing from our last meeting, so we definitely expect to have something for the next meeting, and we'll hope to get that out to folks, you know, three, four, or five days ahead of time, so people can consider it to take action in the next meeting, so we can just leave this on the table unless there's any other, okay. The consent agenda?
Resolution 2013-250, resolution extending contract with Giordano Company for single-stream recycling collection and disposal services for the period of January 1st, 2014, through December 31st, 2016, in the amount not to exceed $9,444 per month. Resolution 2013-251, resolution authorizing the cancellation of tax sale premiums. Resolution 2013-252, resolution authorizing change order number one for ATACCTON Concrete Corp. for construction services for the 2013 sidewalk and curb program. Resolution 2013-253, resolution authorizing final change order number two for A&amp;J Contractors Group, Inc. for construction services of the Fairview Avenue Reconstruction Project. Resolution 2013-254, resolution granting a raffle license number 1238 to the Jefferson PTA for an off-premise 50/50 cash raffle. Resolution 2013-255, resolution affirming village administrators provisional appointment of Joanne Hardwick as key board clerk two, senior clerk typist, civil service, OPEIU. Resolution 2013-256, resolution certifying the board of trustees receipt and review of the 2012 annual audit report. Resolution 2013-257, resolution approving a settlement with Crown Castle Next G, Inc. Resolution 2013-258, resolution reappointing Dr. F. Kennedy Gordon as a regular member of the South Orange Board of Health. Resolution 2013-259, resolution reappointing Richard Wallawix, please excuse the pronunciation, as a regular member of the South Orange Board of Health.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on any consent agenda items?
2013-257, I'd like the attorney to just weigh in.
Mr. Rother, you want to give a brief summary?
It's Next G.
The Next G.
Yeah, that's, in a, a settlement that's been approved by all the parties to the litigation, and has been discussed, of course, in executive session. One change has been made to the document that's attached, and that was at the behest of PSE and G, but does not affect the terms of the settlement as far as South Orange is concerned. It only affects the terms as between Next G and PSE and G, and for that reason, I would recommend moving ahead with the, the settlement as we proposed it here, because none of those terms is affected by which change.
For the public benefit, could you just share, summarize what the settlement?
Yeah, the, the, the settlement terms basically prohibit Next G from going into any of the backyards, which was the issue in the litigation. There are only three locations that they can now place their antenna on, they're all on-street locations, and pursuant to the agreement, they cannot seek any other locations within the village, so that there's only those three locations. Those locations are, as I say, on the street, and two of them are in the form of our gaslights, although those lights will be electrified. All of the costs associated with the installation will be picked up by Next G, as will the lighting expense, so that the ongoing cost of electricity to light those fixtures is not going to be on the village, but rather picked up by, by Next G. In all, it's, it's an excellent settlement, because all of the residents that have come out and opposed the actions of Next G, their, their needs are satisfied by this, and in fact, we've received some email commendation from residents that opposed the actions of Next G, so all in all, we think it's a very positive settlement for the village and the residents that were involved.
Thank you, I wanted, I thought it was real important to share the details for the public, and thank you for the excellent job, because this, you spent a lot of time trying to achieve this type of agreement.
No, and the other important thing to remember is that the, having a presence in the village was very, very important to Next G. The, the compromise that we reached gave them that presence, so that they're not now motivated to take an appeal. This was so important to them that this would have been dragged out in litigation for quite a while, and it would have been rather expensive, and the ultimate result would have been in question. This way, we got the right result without the litigation.
One of the few times it is truly a clear win-win. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment on number 250, which is the contract extending the single-stream recycling collection, just as a point of good news, if you didn't read closely, we are getting two more pickups a year for the same price, which will make it easier for everybody to remember, because instead of it being the second and fourth Wednesday of the month, it'll just be every two weeks, and so it becomes a no-brainer.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hey, can I have a motion, please?
I move.
Trustee Column moves consent agenda, seconded by Trustee Levison, could we have the roll, please?
Roll call. Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
The consent agenda was approved.
Thank you. We have one resolution for separate action.
Yes, resolution 2013-260, resolution approving South Orange Village Center Alliance, FY 2014, operating budget and setting public hearing.
Thank you. What's the date of the public hearing?
November 25th.
Which one?
November 25th.
November 25th, okay.
I move.
Okay, moved by Trustee Levison, seconded by Trustee Schnell, could we have the roll, please?
Roll call. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
The board passed resolution 2013-260 in first reading.
Thank you. Approval of bills, Trustee Levison?
Yes, I move that the bills list previously provided to the board of trustees for examination be approved.
I move, I mean, I second.
Moved by Trustee Levison, seconded by Trustee Davis Ford, we have the roll, please.
Roll call. Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Bills list has been approved.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting up to any member of the public who wishes to speak. Hey, seeing as there's no members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close public comments, and unless there was any new business, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I just have one, one question I want to bring up to the board. With regard to Chairman Matt Glass and the Village Alliance mentioning that there is Small Business Saturday coming up November 30th, would it be irregular or possible to have a, if, since we're trying to bring in folks, shoppers, for, for that, not only South Orange Village, but regional people, to suspend any parking restrictions?
Bring my part with out, he was just here.
Well, we can, it's Saturday, November 30th, which is an opportunity, really, it's a great opportunity to, to bring in shoppers right before the holiday season.
He's already begging.
Sorry, what?
By November 30th, they might already be doing it.
I, I... Traditionally, traditionally, they beg at the same night the Christmas tree gets with it, or the holiday tree, I should say.
I think from the last Parking Authority meeting, it's not by November, isn't that correct, Mark?
It's December 1st.
No, no, it's not December 1st either, it's, it's a few days into December, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, it's usually like December 4th, 5th, 6th, when they start begging, but the only, the only problem I have with the suspending the parking rules is that it hasn't always helped the business owners, and sometimes it's hurt, because people who've come, people who park there, who might be going to the city, park there all day, business owners, business employees park there, so what we've done in the past is say, let the parking lot, the parking lots, but the on-street parking, still have the meters going, so you don't have cars parked there all day, and you still make sure you have some turnover, but the parking lots, you suspend the rules.
So the key would be to make sure that's communicated, I mean, that's...
Well, I think that's the plan that Mark has for the holiday parking. Right. He's just moving it up a couple days.
Okay.
Trustee Rosner, are you the Parking Authority liaison?
I'm one of the two.
And who else?
I'm the alternate.
Okay.
And how he just goes to all meetings.
Do you want to reach out, just touch base and just see if...
Yeah, if Mr. Schnell sends me an email, I'll reach out.
I'll be happy to do that.
I'll submit a job form to you.
Thank you to all of us.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, there was, was there a motion to adjourn?
Me.
Is there a second?
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.